13:00 PM on Thursday, April 3, 2025. And trustee Katz and trustee Abdali will not be making it today. So trustee Srinath Chaudhary, would you take a role please?
Absolutely. President Nakatani.
I'm here.
And trustee Hugh.
I'm here.
And I am trustee Michelle Srinath Chaudhary and I'm present.
Thank you. We have three people for public comment and so we will do them. Let's see, we have Julie Brenner, Danny Marsh and Anna Harris. So whichever order you want to come up in.
Hi.
Okay. By the way, sure. Excuse me.
Hi. Tonight in your email boxes this week, you have heard from MBTA members speaking out in support of MBTA's bargaining proposals. Their student-centered statements and emails reflect their support of MBTA's bargaining proposals around garnered guaranteed aid time, daily prep time and more. The proposals they are speaking out in support of were rejected by Mill Valley School District's bargaining table at the March 25 bargaining session. If management does not plan to cut student learning conditions such as full day kindergarten aids, then why would they hesitate to put these guarantees in collective bargaining agreements? You cannot assure the community by saying that you will not cut the programs if you will also not agree to ensure that they will continue. MBTA members are simply speaking out to let you know what they feel is important for student success. Please remember to listen with an open mind and heart and consider how guaranteeing learning and teaching conditions such as guaranteed daily aid and prep time in the contract can protect and improve our schools for students. We hope that their comments and emails will factor into your conference with labor negotiators tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Danny Marsh and I am the Old Mill School, Old Mill and Park School art teacher. I love my job and I'm truly grateful every day I go to work. It's my dream job right now. However, I'd like to speak on behalf of an article that is being negotiated this spring, Guaranteed Preparation Period for Specialist Teachers. This year I have two days in which I teach every period of those days. Not only do I have, not only do I have very limited time to clean switch materials, greet students as they enter, but because of the lack of prep time, I also use my recess time, lunchtime, to reset, which means I can't use the restroom or eat my lunch. I love my job, but this is not sustainable. The lack of prep means I work weekends and evenings to stage everything around the classroom to make up for not being able to do it during the day. For some units, it's impossible and I have, so I have to have all students completing the same project. I don't really like doing that, but I'm really left with no choice. I ask that you please guarantee one prep a day for specialist teachers. I think it's the same guaranteed for classroom teachers as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Anna Harris. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Edna McGuire. I've been there forever. So I have a lot to say about our wonderful aides and what they provide for us. I was disappointed to hear that guaranteed six-hour kindergarten aid time was, as far as I know, rejected right now in the contract. And I just wanted to kind of paint a picture and let you know what this would be like for the students if it weren't there in the future, wherever, whenever that might be. We wouldn't be able to have two adults to ensure as safe a classroom as possible or when the kindergartners go to specials. We wouldn't be able to mitigate the upcoming loss of our ramp staff. We wouldn't be able to get the most out of our very robust language arts curriculum that we are enjoying very much, but that takes all day to implement all parts of. I wouldn't be able to give students the individual attention that they desperately need when they're in the yellow or green zone. If you want to see what those zones look like, you are all welcome to come to my classroom anytime. I actually, I've been teaching so long, I enjoy dealing with those challenges. But one of the ways that I enjoy dealing with that is knowing that my aide is also there to help support the other students who are not having those challenges so that everybody can get what they need and we can ensure equity. On any given day in my classroom, my aide or I are checking in with students who are having really big feelings, physical outbursts, or just having other lingering effects of the post-COVID world. These are students who did not get the sensory input that they needed when they were one and two years old. And I don't know if it's, you know, it's going to take a while to get back there if we do. This is a world where the rate of ADHD diagnoses in children has increased by 1 million since 2016. And I want to respond to all my neurotypical and neurodiverse students with the same level of expertise and respect that they deserve. And having a consistent aide, the same person all day, helps make that happen. It helps me be able to work with all students and it keeps kids from getting sent to the office, which is very important for a five and six-year-old. And just in, in the end, I just want to let you know that I really believe investing in full-time kindergarten aides, continuing to value that enough to put it in the contract is an investment in educational recovery. And I think it's very important and I really appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I think we will adjourn to close. Thank you everyone. We'll see you.
See you soon.
See you shortly.
[145.88]
So I'm going to open the general meeting here at six thirteen on Thursday, April third, twenty twenty five, and I have a first we need roll call again. Trustee, I was gonna say trustee Katz and trustee Abdali are not here, so trustee Sernsichodj, please, thank you.
With pleasure. So President Nakatani.
I am here.
Thank you, trustee you.
Yeah.
And I am trustee Michelle Sernsichodj, and I am present.
Thank you very much. I have three things to read from reportable actions from closed session. The first item one A pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved settlement by unanimous vote, three days unanimous vote, in the case of student and the Mill Valley School District, the terms include up to seventy three thousand nine hundred and sixty six in reimbursement for educational expenses during the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six school year. Item one B pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved settlement by unanimous vote in the case of student and the Mill Valley School District, the terms include up to sixty two thousand six hundred in reimbursement for educational expenses during the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six school year. Item one C pursuant to California Government Code, section five four nine five seven point one, the board has approved settlement by unanimous vote in the case of student and the Mill Valley School District, the terms include up to forty two thousand seven hundred dollars in reimbursement for educational expenses during the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six school year. Thank you. We are going to now go to approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. We're gonna go into public comments. So if anyone has public comment for items on the agenda, make sure they are turned in by the end of Dr. Kaufman's report. But we're going to go to public comment for non-agenda items. Do we have? Eleven, okay. And I'm gonna read something real quick before we go into this. So bear with me, people. I'm gonna read this because, you know, I didn't run for this position because I'm a great orator or public speaker. So I'm gonna read this. Thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. We are glad that you're here because this is one of several ways that we get feedback from the community that we've been elected to serve. Your feedback is extremely important to us because it helps us make the best decisions for our students, staff, and school families. I've heard recently that it doesn't always feel that way. So I want to take a few minutes to review our review our board policies and address concerns we've heard. The policies ensure that all individuals have a chance to provide comment, that all people are treated equally, and that all people are provided the same amount of time to talk regardless of viewpoint. Right now, we have thirty minutes for items that are not on the agenda, basically public comment about anything and everything related to the school district. Typically, we like to provide individuals with two to three minutes to talk, but the policy allows us to reduce that time if we have lots of speakers. We also don't let people cede their time to others because we want to hear from everyone. I, along with my other board fellow board members, have heard that people feel cut off. We don't mean this. They feel that they have not been heard. We don't want that to happen either. And they feel they're frustrated because they came to speak and were not provided ample time to do so. In short, people feel like they have not been respected, and the board's policy is not working as intended. For context, one of the reasons we added a limit for public comment is that we received feedback that extended public comment periods were causing our meetings to end too late, and people felt that the length of the meeting was making it hard for them to participate. So we're trying to balance these very different viewpoints. To that end, we welcome feedback on revising these policies. You know, should we extend public comment to an hour? Should we extend it longer? Should we always allow three minutes? We welcome, it's something the board would love feedback for and that we would discuss. We welcome your great ideas because we really want to ensure our community feels heard. We have also created a number of new opportunities beyond board meetings since Dr. Kaufman's been here to for our community to provide feedback. Dr. Kaufman hosts a community drop-in for questions about the board agenda every Monday evening before our board meetings. So, you know, instead of coming here where you can only make public comment and we are not allowed to interact with you, on her Zooms, you can ask questions about the agenda and really engage in a true dialogue. We just held our first trustee office hours at Strawberry Point School and have an upcoming one at Tam Valley, and we hope to get to all the school sites before the end of the school year. When we have high interest items like budget and bond issues, we host community forums in person and online. Dr. Kaufman's also hosting a community conversation forum on April seventeenth. This is a great time to provide your thoughts on what's most important to you and your child's education. Email, we love emails. We read every email received before our meetings, and we do our best to acknowledge and respond. Board members also individually attend the various PTA and PTSA meetings at all of our school sites, and we always make room for questions. So you could see, I just, that's an additional six ways to reach us, you know, outside of just kind of catching us in the hall as well. Finally, I would like to say, on behalf of the entire board, thank you. We do value everyone's time, your thoughts, your passion, and your dedication to making this district the best it can be. We share that same mission with you, and if you have thoughts on how we can do better, please let us know. Thank you. With that, we have eleven people for, so, well, we'll do thirty. So everyone can have three minutes. So again, we're gonna have the time clock set to three minutes here, and so speakers come up. Please keep your eye on the timer, and if you hear the buzzer, please wrap up your last sentence. I really don't wanna, you know, have to tell anyone to stop. So we have Ann Elise Lansdowne and after Sindor Elkins.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Ann Elise Lansdowne, and I am the parent of three Park School students. My youngest son Charlie is in Ms. Kinsey Davis's TK class, and I'm here tonight to ask you to reconsider her non-re elect decision. My family has been at Park School for combined eight years, and Ms. Davis is one of the best, most effective teachers that we've had in our experience. This is not a sentiment that is mine alone. Every single family in our classroom has signed a petition to ask you to reconsider this decision. Most of us have also taken the time to write you detailed letters to demonstrate just how outstanding she has been and what a wonderful year that we've had. This is clearly not a performance issue. She is the kind of magical unicorn of a teacher that any district would be lucky to have. It's also not a credentialing issue. Ms. Davis has a master's in teaching from USC, has years of experience teaching multiple grades, and is a leader and a mentor in our school, helping other teachers to obtain their own credentials. It would be one thing if TK were not coming back. We would all understand if her role were simply not there. But now that parents are funding TK, and this board has changed its position, it is inconceivable to us that TK could would continue in Mill Valley without Ms. Davis. We always say that a top priority for our district is to attract and retain outstanding educators. She is one of those educators, and we believe that this change in circumstances warrants a revisit of this decision. Now is the time to put our words into action and to retain this outstanding educator. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sindor Elkins, and my child is also in Ms. Davis's class. I also have a second grader at Park School, and we are huge Park School fans, have had incredible years there, and this year with Ms. Davis has been one of the best years of my children's elementary school careers and preschool careers. Ms. Davis is one of the best teachers. She is warm, she is kind, she is an immensely effective teacher. My son has grown academically, socially, emotionally. He loves going to school. One of my most favorite things is dropping him off in the morning, and when Ms. Davis opens the door, and all the kids just run to her. And the warmth that she's created in that classroom is truly unique. And I'm here because I'm passionate, and I want to help the district be the best that it can be, and frankly was astounded when I learned about this. And like getting emotional thinking about it because she is truly remarkable, and I think it's remarkable that all the parents from this classroom are united and feeling this, and hope that you guys, I know you'll hear us, and hope that you can possibly reconsider this non-elect notice for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adrian Power and then Ali Sage.
Hi, my name is Adrian Power, and I'm a room parent of Mrs. Lisa Shields TK class at Tam Valley. Tonight, I am representing more than forty-six parents who signed petitions and wrote personal letters to the board in unanimous support of Ms. Shields. Collectively, we urge the board to consider reconsider the earlier non-re elect decision and acknowledge the positive impact Ms. Shields has had on our children and the school community as a whole. Asking Mrs. Shields to leave her role as one of our valued educators in the school district is a disservice to us all, especially to our children. From day one, she has consistently demonstrated an ability to connect with the students. She has taken a measured and proven approach to teaching practices in which she lets parents know what she's teaching, why, and how it is serving our children. She also finds ways to be creative and innovative with how she connects and engages with our kids. Beyond the fundamentals, she's built wonderful relationships with the students, and I've found that she has fostered a sense of trust and engagement that there that has been so valuable for these young kids as they get their first impression of elementary school and of the classroom. Her unique ability to harness the attention and respect of her students is what makes her an incredibly effective educator. Parents have shared, and I have seen firsthand, the social and academic growth possible under her leadership. Finally, Ms. Shields doesn't just stop at her class. She is one, she is often the one leading the entire school through a dance at what seems to be nearly every Friday assembly. Her energy and enthusiasm are contagious and a huge part of what makes Tam Valley great. I respectfully ask that you consider all of these positive feedbacks as you move forward with your HR processes and ensure that her professional reputation remains unblemished and her mobility is unrestrained, including first future opportunities she is qualified for in Mill Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ali Sage. I am the parent of a current TKer at Park School. I first would like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Kaufman and the entire board. I deeply appreciate your openness to feedback and just all the hard work and how much you give to our community. I'm truly grateful, and I want to say thank you. I asked to speak tonight because I wanted also to share what an exceptional year our daughter and our family and our entire TK class has had in Kinsey Davis's TK class at Park this year. I'm also asking the board to respectfully reconsider her non-re elect notice now that her role will be available next year. I could talk for many, many hours, and I won't about her experience. I'm also not an orator, so I appreciate you allowing me to read. But Mrs. Davis, in short, is one of the best teachers I've ever encountered. She's made TK this outstanding experience that it's been. I know we all believe that retaining exceptional teachers is just core to the effectiveness of TK, success of our district, and this is really who she is. I volunteered in Mrs. Davis's class many times, and I've personally witnessed the command she has over the students, how exceptionally well she handles this group. I just cannot stress enough how extraordinary she is, and how important I believe, like amazing teachers are, especially for this age group, who can be like wild animals. And she just is a magician with them. And she, her ability to manage our kids, like has allowed all the children in the class to learn and grow in a way that I find to be just extraordinary. Every single person in the class has signed this petition, as you know, asking for her non-re elect to be reconsidered. And I'm just asking once again that you consider this now that you've heard firsthand what an exceptional educator she is and what a benefit she is to our community. Thank you so much for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. We have Carolyn Supple and then Vanessa Justice.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Supple, and I'm here in my personal capacity as a parent to Diana and Alex, who are also at the extraordinary Park School. Like many families, we moved to Mill Valley for the schools in large part, and I'm speaking tonight because the decision to issue non-relection notices rather than layoff notices to impacted teachers in transitional kindergarten across the district raises concerns about your leadership and this board's oversight role. These are not just bureaucratic choices. These are decisions that affect people's careers, our community's trust, and the long-term strength of Mill Valley schools. When talented, high-performing educators are let go, not through layoffs, but through non-relect notices that suggest failure, we don't just lose great teachers, we damage our district's reputation as a workplace, and we also send a message to current and future staff that Mill Valley is not a place where excellent teaching is recognized and supported in difficult times. If this were a business, you wouldn't be able to build a strong competitive organization without investing in talent. Schools are no different. The ability to attract and retain exceptional educators is a business imperative. It's what drives student outcomes, parent satisfaction, and long-term enrollment. You've heard many tonight talk about how Ms. Kinsey Davis is exactly the kind of educator any high-performing organization would fight to keep. And her classroom is joyful, structured, inclusive, and effective. She represents the kind of talent that brings lasting value to a system, and issuing her a non-relect when she has done nothing wrong to warrant it feels like the result of a system managing a budget crisis by pushing responsibility down to the employee level. And that's not a sustainable leadership model, and it's not how high-performing organizations behave. The board is ultimately responsible for ensuring that our district is not only financially sound but also led with strategic vision. And if we want Mill Valley to continue to be a destination district, we need to treat our educators as the strategic assets that they are. Because in any sector, education included, talent is the engine, and if engaged parents aren't listened to and teachers aren't treated with dignity and respect during tough choices, it undermines our schools and ultimately our children's futures. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vanessa?
Vanessa Justice, I'm here to talk again about counseling and the counseling program at the Mill Valley School District. As you know, we have a petition to save the current counseling program and not have it cut so that we have a dedicated counselor at each of the elementary schools. And we have over six hundred signatures on our petition, so I want to give you an update on that. But more importantly, I wanted to give you an update that after the last board meeting, Kido, as you know, sent out an email saying that they are allocating additional funds to help with some of the shortfalls in other programming besides arts and music, which is what they're generally dedicated to. And so we did actually meet with them to find out, you know, what our options are for help to try to save the counseling program as it exists today. And they were wonderful, of course, and said, absolutely, we're talking to a few different people. We're doing our due diligence to find out what the all the high needs are. And we asked, what can we do? What can we do to help? So there's a couple of things. One is, you know, the board and superintendent Kaufman need to be supportive of continuing the counseling program as is, obviously. And the other thing is that if I could ask, you know, people listening online in the room to make sure that they give to Kido this year and make sure that they meet their current funding, and also be, you know, open to possibly helping with additional funds to save the counseling program if they're supportive. As a reminder, the counseling program is super important for elementary school kids, especially post-COVID. We've created an amazing counseling program at the elementary school level. It might be considered an extra by some people, but here at the Mill Valley School District, we're showing that we can be leaders in mental health and social emotional learning by having these dedicated counselors that are helping. And if we're cutting other supportive staff, having counselors that are following the students from TK kindergarten first all the way through fifth and really understand the student body of each individual elementary school and the middle schools, we'd also love to keep the wellness center at the middle school. It's, it is a really worthy issue to pursue and to support. So I'm just here to kind of give an update, say we're still working on it, and we know that there's a lot of moving parts, and we'd love to just continue this conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Katie Weber and then Molly Mundell Bass?
Katie Weber, I have a child, a fourth grader at Park School. Again, we're gonna keep the conversation going as you continue on the conversation. I'm also here talking to talk about counseling as well to keep the conversation moving, because as you know, with the Kido, the new funds from Kido potentially is looking at these opportunities to keep part of our counseling program. As you know, it's very valuable. I know we've talked about different options. I know we talked about MFT interns in the past, but also what we're really advocating for, as Vanessa eloquently said, was really these full-time counselors that are there year to year, because I can't tell you how important they are. I can personally speak to that. Also, I've had teachers come and tell me how important they are, how supportive they are, because there's a disruption in the classroom, due disruptive behaviors, the counselor can help resolve that conflict. And I think it's in a more positive way. It's not, they're not being sent to the principal's office because they're in trouble, but it's more around really providing that really supportive environment. And as you know, if they have mental health, they also have very good academic, very academic performance as well. So I think that they've been shown to tie that as well. I know I've dropped out the ratios in the past, the one to two fifty, I know Dr. Kaufman knows as well. But I just think really, if we can really bring another counseling position back within those funds, I think that would be very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Molly?
All right, good evening, part of trustees and Dr. Kaufman. My name is Molly Mundell Bass. I'm here as a veteran teacher from Tam Valley School, and I am worried that the community does not truly understand how these planned budget cuts will affect their children. We know as parents, we often miss crucial information because we're focused on what we need for our own children right now. I worry that our parents aren't hearing about things that could affect their children down the line. And I'm speaking here tonight to outline the impacts of the budget cuts as seen through the eyes of a teacher. As a veteran teacher, I know that, for example, the changes to our special ed staffing in our learning center at Tam Valley are going to be profound. How will a special education teacher possibly meet the needs of the students TK through five when cuts are being made to an already overflowing system? How will they meet with parents, classroom teachers, schedule appropriate hours for each student, and actually work one-on-one with their students? As a veteran teacher, I know the effects of having fewer intervention teachers. Ramp teachers will be gone. Our TOSA can only see one small group as opposed to the three that were going with our ramp teachers before. Students will not be given remedial support by a trained professional. They may fall further behind, and students could potentially need to be screened by our special education teacher, where we've already reduced staff. As a veteran teacher, I know having no consistent ELL teacher will be a loss. Students who do not speak English will not have the opportunity to work with a professional who understands how the acquisition of language works. They will be thrown into the classroom, and the classroom teacher will do their best to make sure they acclimate, but probably through the use of programs like Google Translate. And I wonder, is this what is best for kids and the message we want to send to our community? I think about our Tam Valley School and how we have Friday morning assemblies where parents attend. These assemblies have been planned by our principal, counselors, music teacher, and other teachers who spend their own time planning these events. I just don't see how these can continue when counselors have been reduced and classroom teachers and specialists will be asked to do more than we ever have. This special time to boost morale and bring the community together will probably be lost or reduced. And based on the most recent cuts, I see the cracks will start to show when our buildings perhaps will receive less attention, our technology as teachers and students may begin to fail, and our teachers will not be given compensation for improving ourselves and attending professional development. These are just the things we can think of right now. And, you know, as you know, teachers are doing whatever it takes and will do whatever it takes to help students thrive, but we do need your support. And I'm just simply here tonight to bring light to what it feels like as a teacher with boots on the ground. As we look to next year and our budget fluctuates, please, let's try to keep cuts as far from the classroom as possible and keep the support for our most vulnerable students at the front of mind.
Thank you. And then we have Anne Marie Padia, and then we have James Isles, and then Anita Sparks is online.
Hello, members of the school board and superintendent Kaufman. Thank you for listening tonight. My name's Anne Marie Padia, and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Tam Valley Elementary. This is my twenty-first year in the teaching and my seventeenth year in Mill Valley School District. I'm here again to express my concerns regarding the district's rollout of the CKLA Amplify scripted curriculum. While I understand the intent behind standardizing and streamlining instruction, it is crucial that we view this curriculum as just one component of a broader, more dynamic learning experience rather than relying on it entirely. My colleagues and I have been instructed to teach the current curriculum with fidelity and not make any changes, but this approach is proving to be counterproductive. It is counterproductive to spend ninety minutes each day delivering a curriculum that fails to cover all the necessary standards and lacks the very important parts of a high-quality education, like books, and a spelling program. This program doesn't, doesn't offer any authentic differentiation for my most vulnerable students or my high-achieving students. This is a one-size-fits-all program. Overall, it doesn't provide students with the comprehensive, high-quality instruction they deserve. I find myself scrambling to fill in the gaps during other subjects. This situation also diminishes student engagement. When students are not receiving a complete and rigorous education that they need, it's difficult to maintain their interest and enthusiasm for learning. The limitations of this prescribed curriculum are affecting both teaching and learning in negative ways. A more flexible and holistic approach is needed, one that allows teachers the freedom to adjust and enrich the curriculum to better serve our students. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I truly look forward to further discussions on how we can work together to improve the educational practices. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Hello, my name is James Isles. You've seen either me or my wife come here for months on end, and I'd be remiss to not show up when things are going well and only show up when things are going bad. And it's been a very, very tough year for you all, and I've watched it and have commented on it. And certainly, I've come here and complained about the things that I thought were important. And I've always felt I was always listened to, maybe not clearly understood. And there certainly were times where I had a misaligned interest with how the actual district is running. This past year, I certainly know more about how school districts run than I ever wanted to a year ago, such as it is. I would especially like to thank you, Dr. Kaufman. I had spoken to you that sunlight is the best disinfectant, which I think you very much agree with. The Monday meetings are very important. Your outreach during budget cuts was very important. I know that's not easy, and it takes a lot of time, and you have a community that is very interested in what you're doing. Thank you, Paula. I know that has not been a fun year to audit things that didn't exist before. I've been in similar cleanup positions, cleaning up legacy codes. It's not fun, and it is a very hard task to do. Thank you to the board. I've always felt like you've listened to me. I hope in the future we'll have quieter years and three minutes on the clock every time, but that is not the way things work. I will continue to see you every month. I very much appreciate what you're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Anita Sparks online.
Can you hear me?
Anita, yes.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Thank you for giving me some time. And I am a parent of a sixth grader and a third grader at Edna McGuire. And I just wanted to voice my curiosity. I know that we have reinstated TK with the help of Kido and a parent-driven effort to raise the funds, and that Kido has also promised funds for STEM and counseling. However, as I see a budget projected for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I still see almost a close to $2 million deficit. And I just wanted to be curious as to how we plan to address that deficit, and also to ask the board and the superintendent, what could we do? I know it's been mentioned in the past, for us as stakeholders in our community to maybe bring- to maybe bring up the topic of funding TK to our state representatives, up to the governor. Are there steps that we can do? I know a lot of times we rally together. I heard several parents before talking about petitions being signed for individual teachers, you know, that are being brought forth to you. But is there a movement that we could join as parents of locally funded schools to address the fact that the state is mandating TK but is currently not funding it or helping school districts like ours fund such programs? Because I'm concerned that although for the 25-26 school year TK is in, what are we going to do for the subsequent school years? So just curiosity and asking for what could we do outside of attending these board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, and now we will go to reports. We have CSEA first. Pat, can you mean?
Hello. So the latest is we're into our third negotiation meeting with the district. We're interested in seniority within all job classifications, bumping rights, and right to be hired to new positions through seniority. And I'm really happy that the TK program is going to be funded again. Just from being an employee there, I've seen how it affects the kids and how they grow, and they're ready to go into first grade, I mean, into kindergarten and to first grade. So the district's made a big, you know, investment in that program, and we're happy that it's going to continue. I also wanted to mention the aid time, which are classified employees. I think it's very important that the aid time stays the same. And during my time in the district, I've seen how the aides are invaluable in the classroom. And without having the same amount of time, I think it would affect the educational process and the kids, which is why everybody's here. And in closing, on a personal note, I think this is the last time I'm coming around. And I appreciate being employed here for 38 years, and my daughter went to school here. And I wish all you the best, and see you down the road.
Yeah, thank you.
He's coming back for the retirement ceremony, I'm sure. Unless he's in Colombia.
He's like, I'm coming out of here. Thank you very much, Pat. Thank you for all your years. And now, MBTA, please.
Erin's coming.
No, I'm not.
I'm on my own. Hi again. We are Julie Bremmer and Erin Fraser, the MBTA co-presidents, as you know. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight and every month. We greatly appreciate this regular chance to speak with you in this forum. Today, Erin and I had the privilege of speaking with James Shepherd, who is heading up the Community Conversations Initiative. We truly appreciate his passion and dedication to engaging with the community members to help Mill Valley's incredible schools shine even brighter. We encourage all community members, parents, staff, and others, including those without children currently in our schools, to share their stories and ideas. We are stronger when we come together as partners, and Erin and I are truly hopeful that these conversations will allow us to continue on the path of strengthening our schools together. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the challenges our certificated staff has faced recently. The uncertainty created by the reduction in forced notices has been incredibly stressful. Yet despite these challenges, teachers who received layoff notices have continued to show up each day, delivering high-quality, enthusiastic lessons to their students. Their ability to stay focused and positive during such an emotionally difficult time speaks volumes about their dedication and passion for teaching. It is important that we acknowledge the emotional toll this process has taken on them and celebrate their resilience. They've gone above and beyond for our students during this challenging period, and it's crucial that we recognize their efforts. While the layoff notices to certificated staff were rescinded when you voted to reinstate TK for the 25-26 school year, it's our understanding that classified notices were not fully rescinded. MBTA members stand in solidarity with our CSEA colleagues who will continue to demonstrate incredible professionalism and dedication during the remaining months of the school year. Their contributions are vital, and their impact on our schools will be felt for many years to come.
And we want to further acknowledge your recent decision to reinstate TK for the 25-26 school year. This is a huge win for our community, and we truly appreciate the efforts of our generous community partners in making this happen. Mill Valley students are so lucky that our community came together to fund additional funding for this important grade level. Thank you, Board and Superintendent Kaufman, Assistant Superintendent Rignier, for showing your support of TK by voting to reinstate it for next year. Looking ahead, though, I think we all know it's crucial we work together to ensure stable, long-term funding for TK beyond the 25-26 school year. This program is essential for our youngest learners, and it deserves ongoing support, so it can continue to thrive. We want to express our gratitude to you for your advocacy for policy changes at the state level, especially with AB 1391, the bill currently in the state senate. This bill is a key step towards securing the funding TK needs for the future, and we are grateful for your continued leadership in pushing for its passage. Many MBTA members have written to state decision-makers to advocate for continued TK funding as well. Together, we can amplify our voices to guarantee funding that ensures the continued success of TK in Mill Valley for our youngest learners. Our TK teachers are highly qualified professionals who have invested considerable time and effort, often at their own expense, earning their early childhood education credits and developing a strong, developmentally appropriate program. Their dedication to the success of their students and well-being of their students is remarkable. In the recent staff newsletter, management acknowledged that the stress and uncertainty around TK and that what stress it's placed on families and local preschools. However, it overlooked the significant stress the situation has also placed on our TK teachers and assistants. Please remember, they are not just the faces of TK in Mill Valley, they're also the heart and soul of the program. As we move forward and shape, or sorry, as we move forward and shape this vital program for 25-26 and hopefully beyond, we ask that you continue engaging with our TK teachers and recognize all the incredible work that they've done. Their dedication and commitment have been inspiring, as I've said, and they deserve to be acknowledged for their vital role in the program's success. And finally, as you heard Molly Bass very eloquently express tonight, MBTA members are deeply concerned about the future of our English learner's academic success following the elimination of ELD teaching positions in our district. They wonder, will replacing highly qualified elementary ELD teachers with instructional assistance improve English learner outcomes? A qualified ELD teacher delivering the state-mandated LPAC assessment brings specialized knowledge, skills, and years of training to support English learners. This ensures more accurate identification of student needs and better, more effective interventions. Our fellow Southern Marin basic aid districts have retained their ELD teachers. MBSC can do better by continuing to provide Mill Valley's English learners with the highly qualified teachers they need and deserve. Thank you very much for listening tonight and all the months that we come here, and thanks for your continued service to our district. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Dr. Kaufman?
Some students join us up here to share some information. One of the things that we're trying to do, and kids, we apologize.
Kids, we apologize for you waiting for the order that we operate our meetings, but this is just how we operate in school boards. So we've had a number of schools in our community have the opportunity to develop murals this year. And one of the things that, as you know, we've been trying to elevate in our community is student voice and really capturing those moments where our children are happy and proud. And so I want to just capture some visuals on happy and proud in our district. Next slide, please. Benefits, of course, of this type of work on murals as a school-wide effort and really getting collaboration, creativity, building a school culture, building a school identity, and again, importantly, capturing student voices and experiences. Next slide. We have, again, I'm capturing some additional, more technical capacities that this type of work brings together. You know, in this case, there was real career applications and understanding of design, spatial awareness, you know, some applied science work, and, you know, just really engaging in project-based learning, which I hope will be a hallmark of our district as we move toward the future. And in this case, you're going to hear about the design process at Old Mill. Laura Palmer supported both Old Mill and Edna in their work. And again, the question that they asked was, what do you love about Old Mill? So I don't know, Jason, you want to take over from here?
Hey there. Good evening. So this was a big, big lift by the PTA, and they sponsored this, so shout out to the Old Mill PTA. And as you can see, it was a pretty simple question, what do you love about Old Mill? And I'm going to let Theo talk about his experience with Laura and his personal touch on the mural.
Well, like, at first, we were just like a regular art class, but then, like, we had like a guest with Laura, and then Mr. Marsh asked us to, like, draw something we loved about our school. And then, so I drew this little raccoon thing.
Is it in the trash can?
Yes. So... So then, like, after we were, like, drawing it for a little while, she started, like, telling us, like, what was, like, it to be, like, an artist. And then, like, a few days later, I was going, we were going by, and then I saw the process of her making it. It was like, first, she was like, using a projector to project them, like, our pictures onto the wall, and then she, like, drew it over a pencil and then traced the pencil lines. And it's just really awesome that she came to our school, and that something I made is going to be here for such a long time.
Yes.
And if you look at the pictures, you can see, if you go back one slide there, or sorry, go back one slide, you can see, so she's starting right there, and kids sort of gathered, and then the crowd got bigger and bigger, and it was just really cool to watch her just do it in action. And sort of bottom left there is where Theo's contribution is. And, you know, something that'll be there forever.
May I ask Theo a question? So Theo, what do you love about Old Mill, and how does your picture embody that?
I like the mascot.
Ah, so for those of us who don't know, can you share what the Old Mill mascot is? And then, you know, how did you come with that idea of, it's a garb? Tell me more about what I'm looking at.
It's a raccoon in a trash can, because I know raccoons love trash.
They're very adept at going into trash. They're very smart animals.
Survivors.
Survivors, thrivers. Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say Laura loved working with our schools. She actually was just completely enamored of us, so very happy to share that she's continued to work with us. So next slide. Again, here we have work going on at Edna, the same prompt. And in this case, we're going to have it displayed on, I think it's a wall outside the second grade wing, right? So, and I have Mr. ...
So, please.
Mr. McCord and kids.
So this process has been, I'll say, four years in the making, because when I came, I started talking to our PTA about it. We also had, prior to, several years ago, there was an Edna McGuire Dads Club, and they did some fundraising as well. So through their contributions and those of our PTA, we were able to fund this project. After seeing it over at Old Mill, I was pretty excited to just see what the process was. And this just shows what the students in the classroom, working with Laura Palmer and with our art teacher. And then here's the process as it continued on. I am honored that, I don't know if there are other people at Edna that walk around in a collared shirt and tie, but there's a picture of someone on the mural who had, I didn't draw it myself, so I don't know if it's a, I'm not sure if it's me, but whoever did it, they get A pluses for the rest of their time at Edna and pizza every Friday. They all get that, anyway, so that's not it. So I have two of my friends here tonight, Rishi from first grade and Stella from fifth grade, and I'm excited to have them share about their experiences. So Rishi, if you would go first, that would be wonderful.
I'm Ashivanta Nathan, first grader at Edna McGuire in Ms. Stewart's class. My art teacher's name is Miss B. My favorite thing to make is creations made out of clay. I like everything on the mural because it's unique. We used a blank piece of paper and drew everything we liked about our school. I drew games based on four games. The muralist did a good job because it was all over the second grade building wall, and that it was a big space. The whole school took a picture after we were done. I want to thank the muralist and the whole school that drew all the pictures. One day, I want to draw a mural on our wall at home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stella. I'm Stella, and I'm at Edna, as you know. I'm in Miss O's class, and our art teacher's name is Miss B. The Miss Laurel came and told us to draw everything we love about Edna on a blank piece of paper. And then I heard her talking to a group of other kids, saying how she loved anything with sunglasses. So I drew an apple with sunglasses, and now that's on the mural. It's beautiful. I love how everyone, even though everyone's different, we all contributed a small part and it makes it unique, and even though everyone's different, it made a masterpiece. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Where, oh, okay. I was going to say, where? Because I wasn't sure.
So this is outside one of our second grade building, and it faces the blacktop, the main playground area.
Wonderful.
And if there was a way to zoom in, I would point myself out just in the far left hand on the bottom. But you can come by the school and please see that, and, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Excellent speakers.
I know. Now we're going to share a little bit about Tam Valley. Tam Valley is doing a legacy project, and they are going to do a mosaic. So the fifth graders are going to come up and share a little bit with Principal Lamar.
So, good evening. We are still, we've planned it all out. So we are starting the mosaic the Monday we get back from spring break. So everything's prepped and ready with the help and spearheading of Eric Edelson, who's standing behind me. Over here. So the fifth graders, it's a legacy gift from the fifth graders, and they were asked what was meaningful to them, Tam Valley, Mill Valley, or Marin?
This is our fifth grade legacy gift to Tam Valley. Fifth graders all drew what they thought was important to Marin, Tam Valley, and Mill Valley. After all the fifth graders' drawings were collected by the artist Ross Holesman, he combined all the drawings with the elements that were most important to us fifth graders, including the Golden Gate Bridge, California poppies, and the redwood trees. Starting the Monday we get back from spring break, the entire school will start putting the tile mosaic together. Thanks to Fire Clay Tile, my dad's company, we get this chance to make this amazing legacy gift and make Tam Valley more beautiful.
Thank you. And that's kind of what it's going to be looking like. That weird space in the middle right there, that's blank. That's where our water fountain is. So it's all ready to go, and we're excited. Yay, Tam Valley!
Can I ask a question? So did you, how did you come up with the ideas?
Well, all the fifth graders, we were gathered in to Miss Padilla's Well, all the fifth graders, we were gathered in to Miss Padilla's room. Um, and we were all given. They were all basically given, um, like a piece of paper and basically wrote out ideas or drew, um, stuff that they thought was important and that should be included on the mural. And, um, as we said, the artist Ross Holesman basically took, um, as much as he could that all the fifth graders said and put it together to create this.
Were there any elements of this mural that you, that came out of your mind during that brainstorm?
Well, a lot of these were like a mix of a bunch of ours. Um, I'm pretty sure he like chose ones that multiple people like drew because they, um, it was like, he could see that they kept, like, they kept on showing up. So he thought, hey, that's probably important. I might put it on their mural. So.
Yeah. So what did you two draw?
Um, I think, like I drew, um, the Golden Gate Bridge. So I thought that that was a really important piece. Um, things like redwoods, um, and California poppies.
I drew redwoods, the Golden Gate, um, a rainbow because I like rainbows.
And they were all incorporated. That's amazing.
Yeah, I also drew a raccoon.
Well, didn't make the cover.
Why didn't any tigers make it onto our mural? Or me?
I put a tiger as well.
I think some people put tigers, but it wasn't as popular of a vote.
Yeah.
Interesting, a process.
Did you introduce yourselves, by the way? And what classes you're in?
Um, I'm Julie Edelson and I'm in Miss Kellman's fifth grade class at Tam Valley.
I'm Ella McMullin and I am in Miss Mendoza's fifth grade class at Tam Valley.
So articulate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have some certificates that we're going to pass out.
All names. Do you want to, you all want to come up and give them out or? Oh yeah, we're going to take a photo real quick. Muralists. Or maybe their principals. You guys are going to need some, maybe their principal. We'll give you your kids to call and then we want to get everybody together for photo, like trustees, not me. So we have Rishi. Rishi, good job. Do you want to give us a certificate?
Sure, sure. Yes, yes.
And Theo? Theo?
Let me shake your hand. Thank you very much. Yes, congratulations. Oh, Amelia. Amelia's on here. Oh, whoops, Ella. Thank you so much. Okay, and we're missing.
Stella.
Stella. Do we have one for Stella?
Do you want to hold up this one and then I'll get you one from Ms. Russell that says Stella's name on it? Would that be okay? Okay, so just hold that one up.
Much. Well done.
Whatever you like.
Right here?
One, two, three. No valley.
No valley.
I promise.
Yeah, I'm so sorry about that.
Thank you, parents and kids. You make it all worth it. Just like having our staff here. It's just great. It's a, such a good community. So thank you all. And no one needs to stay for later in the meeting. Parents, you can, class can be dismissed.
Thank you, muralists. Okay, we will keep going. Okay, and we have one public comment on consent agenda. Okay. Let's see. Um, so I think we take that public comment now. Uh, Erin?
Hi, I'm back. I'm Erin Fraser. I'm a teacher at Edna McGuire and someone in MBTA. Okay. I just had a question about item F8, the annual transportation plan report. Um, I looked at the report and I'm wondering about how the cost for the transportation plan factored into the budget for 24, 25 and 25, 26. I think I just don't understand the report. So I'm really here just asking questions and maybe you could discuss it so at some point or we can talk later. Um, it looks like 195,775 was spent on transportation expenses in, this would be 23, 24, and the actual is for 23, 24. Um, and then it looks like 60% of those costs were reimbursed. And then a transportation add-on from the LCFF calculator reduced those expenses even further to 26,000. I'm wondering if that's correct. You don't have to answer me. I know you can't, but that's how I'm reading it. And if that's true, if, if our total expenditures after reimbursement and things like that were 26,000 in 23, 24, I'm wondering whether the district is budgeting for 302,000 in transportation costs for this year and even more, 423,000 in 25, 26. Um, I'm wondering if significant additions have been made to our transportation plan or program. Um, I didn't see evidence of this in the report provided, but I welcome any information that may help me better understand this item. My concern is that budgeting high amounts in, in this one area or other areas may make it look like fewer funds are available for, in other areas of the budget, such as supports for students and staff, which is, as you know, something I come here and talk about a lot. Um, I'd love to know if I'm reading this document accurately and if so, why we're projecting such steep increases to our transportation budget for this year and next. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I, um, we're going, I'm going to ask for approval of consent agenda. I don't really want to pull any, is there, does anyone want to pull anything out of consent agenda?
No, I think, you know, the, the comment I'm sure will be followed up with.
Maybe before I ask for a motion, could we just get a clarification on that then?
Yeah. Um, I can defer it to Paula, but basically it's the special education, um, costs that I believe were aggregated and, and then deferred to districts, um, from, uh, the SFA, but I don't know.
The annual transportation is a new, um, requirement that they started two years ago. And, um, it's, it's to justify the LCFF calculation that we get. So all districts are allocated within their LCFF, a certain dollar amount for transportation. Marin does not have a lot of transportation outside of special ed, but other school districts do have, um, expenses that would far exceed that. And it would allow them to get a special discount and more money toward their LCFF calculation. Our allocations that we put in are for, um, our special ed. And we contract, we're part of a joint, JPA, Joint Public Association for our Special Ed Transportation Countywide. And we, where actually all of the business officials are the board members for that JPA. And, um, we, though you, the expenses are expensive now. Um, next year they have, we only got one bid. Um, and they are going to be 30% higher. Um, because of our location of being in Marin, um, and not having a local transportation company. We are having to contract, um, with a company that comes over from the East Bay. They have to actually rent space to store their buses. Um, they transport their drivers in, in a van and in order to minimize costs from the East Bay. But they actually have to pay to store their buses here when, um, they're not in use. Um, and with all the costs associated with, um, the cost of living, um, they didn't increase their rates because we had locked in for a three-year contract and it expired. So next year we're in, it is anticipated to go up 30%. And it's based on the number of students that you have using the bus. So it all depends on, um, students with IP's that are going to either the county program or non-public school. Not all of our students utilize the bus.
So the 423,000 for the 25, 26 years, that 30% increase. And the estimated 60% reimbursement was in the previous calculation and we don't anticipate getting anything.
No, and if it is, it'll be part of our LCFF. So they just put it into our LCFF. We actually don't receive some of the funds. It's just part of our calculation and because we're locally funded, our property tax far exceeds.
Yeah, awesome. So we don't get any money. Okay.
I wonder if it's something, you know, because it is, you know, it's, thank you for responding, you know, off the cuff, but I wonder if it's something that, um, you know, we could just get a VC on just, just to, to understand that because, yeah, that's quite a jump. And, uh, it's not, it's in keeping with what I'm reading is going on everywhere. Uh, but still would like to, to understand that. Um, and so appreciate the spotlight.
And that number is based on the students that we have this year. So if our, if we have less students that aren't utilizing the bus, our portion will go down, but it all depends.
Could also go up.
Yeah, there are some districts that started, um, contracting with private, they're not taxis, but like a Uber company to transport students because it was becoming so extraordinary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so with that information, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda is passed. Um, next item, business and financial.
So one of the things we've tried to do, as, uh, mentioned in a prior, prior meeting, is to move the monthly budget update off of the, uh, consent agenda and, uh, have it in front of, uh, the board and communities so that it's easier to locate and easier to track. And I will hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Renier to talk about how we ended up where we are now. And it's been a community effort, which is quite phenomenal.
What you're seeing is a regular report that, um, we use that's part of our software and it's aligned with our SACS information. And we just give a brief, um, explanation here. But also in ta- attached to our board, um, item is the new, um, financial statement that we're going to be using. And once we have our website up and going, it is going to be a standout item that we are going to update monthly and it'll be the first thing that you see. I have been, um, extremely supportive and I thank all of the parents that have stepped out. And during all of this, um, really helped guide me in developing, um, a one-page summary. We actually had one parent who, um, during all of the things going on within our district and the TK, um, asked to be part of our budget advisory committee. So we added him on. And he took a jab at putting it together and then started asking questions. And we worked together, going back and forth. And we came up with this one-page summary that, um, kind of shows our past, how we ended up closing our books, um, from year to year. Right now it's showing five years. We are going to probably bring it down to three years. And then we're always going to have our current budget and what our projection is, just like in our multi-year projections, the two years out. Um, one additional feedback that we still haven't incorporated is, um, more, we, uh, received more information. I had two meetings? We had budget meetings that we had planned to do like a budget 101. We didn't have a big turnout, but the parents that did show up, um, provided additional feedback that they would like to see a variance between budget cycles that, um, showed in more detail what was the difference between budget adoption and our current adoption in the supplies area, so the 4,000s and the 5,000s. So we're working on developing that one-page sheet so that both of them are just easily accept, except, excess, sorry. Here's my EL.
And you'll see in real time then how we're, how we're comparing from our original budget to our current budget. So you'll see the variance here as well. Um, but as Paula just mentioned, we'll be providing that in more detail for the more, uh, the items that fluctuate more, the, this is obviously consistent operational cost. But when we're looking at things that, that we may have more flexibility in allocating other places, we're going to show those variances and projections on a monthly basis against our original budget. So, um, I mean, it's just the, this group of individuals is when we roll out our new website, you will see, um, you know, quarterly statements, quarterly calls that having the opportunity to come and hear where we are in terms of where we were projected to be. And then just monthly, you know, captured in a one-page, uh, it's not translated from school to district jargon into, um, what, you know, the private sector would consider a, a financial statement. Uh, and this is the first time again in 29 years of my career that I've seen a budget this transparent. And I can tell you, these parents spent hours and hours and hours on this. So, uh, when we get to our volunteer recognition, we're going to have to make sure we capture their names. But, um, anyway, I don't know if you have more to say. Is it just a motion to adopt, right?
Yep.
Well, thank you BA, thank you for all the work, but also thank you BAC and all those volunteers. Um, it's a lot of work. Thank you. And I, it's, you know, it's never been so clear.
I'd like to mention this is an L cap goal that we've been working on.
One suggestion though. Can we show balance of our funds? Underneath?
You want to see the? Okay. Yeah, this is just the general fund, but you want all of our funds?
Yeah, like a general fund, a total general fund, what, what's going on with the fund balances and risk rate. Because at the end of the day, that is driving a lot of our decision. And also percent versus our target. You got it. Okay. Yeah, it is format too, like I don't.
Yes, okay.
And we will again add more to our website as we roll it over. It's expected to roll soon, but we're trying to make sure that as we present our new website, that we have things available in ways that are user-friendly and you don't need to dig for them. So, um, it will be a work in progress probably through the summer. But our goal is to make sure it's kind of a one-click away to get the information we need to, um, find any specific thing.
Can I, may I also remind the public that, you know, uh, we as a board receive this information the same time that they do. But we do have the benefit as they do of asking questions in advance. Uh, and so sometimes people get the impression that, you know, the board doesn't ask questions. But the fact is that, uh, we do have the privilege, as does the public, to do that in real time. And it really helps so that if there is any ahas, you know, Paula can bring that out in conversation uh, as part of our, our ability to all learn how to read budgets. And then also I just want to remind myself that these are just snapshots, shots of an ever-evolving, um, document. And, you know, we might be like, oh my God, what does that mean? But it's all in continuum and, uh, we, you know, so we're, we're on a journey. We're not there yet. But, um, I appreciate this because I think that those things that might come up that create concern will, we, we can anticipate along the year, during the year, uh, and just get that information out to folks. So, thanks.
Thank you. Well, with that, um, any other questions?
No, that's.
Okay. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve this budget update.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And we're moving on to the demographic study.
Great. Try to promote the presenter for the demographic study. As you know, um, one of the things that we are, uh, doing is trying to get a, a solid and accurate projection of our enrollment, um, particularly as we look forward to building a middle school. Uh, we want to make sure that we're capturing, uh, enough, uh, potential growth, uh, over what we have right now, but not exceeding, uh, what we need to fund for a middle school, um, development. but not exceeding what we need to fund for a middle school development. And we also wanted to see what our elementary school projections are as well. In future iterations, maybe in one of the June meetings, but possibly later in the year, we will look at some of the school boundary studies as well. You know, we know that, that enrollment is, is, you know, in high demand. And we've gone to kind of restructure our campuses so that we have three classrooms at each primary grade in Tam Valley and Edna and that are smaller schools. We will have two classrooms at each grade level. And again, that enrollment will fluctuate over time as well. But this is where we are today. Do we have them? All right, let's go.
Good evening. I am Isaac Johnson.
Is it Isaac who's here today? Isaac Johnson from M G T.
Good evening. Hopefully my audio is coming through okay.
Is it, is it coming? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Assuming that you can hear me, I'll go ahead and proceed. Thank you for the introduction. I am Isaac Johnson with M G T, the project manager that's been assigned to this task. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. For those of you that are following along here, I appreciate you letting me join virtually and we'll work through this together. We've been tasked with doing a couple of tasks. The first one is to project your resident student population, to give you an understanding of where we expect student population shifts to occur moving forward. And we do that using geographic information systems or G I S. And it's proprietary software that allows us to analyze data, create a data model and project student population shifts in the future. And this is going to be instrumental in your facility planning process moving forward. So I'll run through some slides here and make sure that I'm available for questions as we move to the presentation. The first thing that I'd like to get everyone to understand is what work has been accomplished to this point. We have taken your spatial data and tabular data and set it up for the district. The spatial data being your school points and student points. We'll talk about what those are and what they look like here in a moment. And we've taken the tabular data, which is also your student information as well, and have merged it to, to give it a spatial component. We're going to, we have analyzed the demographics, the dynamics that are taking place within the community as well. There's some unique things that are happening in Mill Valley that are unique to not just the community, but the surrounding area. And zooming out at the higher view, unique in terms of what we're seeing state and national trends as well. We do a lot of this work throughout the country and we're able to cross-reference that with a lot of our experiences as we've been doing this for quite some time now. In fact, this is a year thirty-five that we've been doing this together as a group. And we take all that information and we're able to provide you with a district-wide student forecast that will give you a clear understanding of where students are so that you can begin to direct capacity to where those students are now currently and moving forward into the future. So it's important to think spatially. We're talking about resident-based projections, right? And it starts with your tabular data that I mentioned before, which is your student file. So we take a look at four years of student data, going back, representing three years of change. So we can get an understanding of what's happening with your student movement that we call mobility. And we also make sure that we map your student points and the district boundary according to the parcels or lot lines that are out there. And then we begin to divide the, the, the district up into smaller study areas. In fact, we've created a hundred and forty of them. The logic behind creating those study areas is to create small neighborhoods, I think of them as planning areas, that will have their own individual study down there. So we'll look at the student counts there. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. Will you just tell us when to advance the slide? So we're trying to be in sync with your presentation, but we're not always sure exactly where you are. So.
All right, I, I will do that.
Slide number four is where I am. Which I believe is two slides back, but I'm not sure.
Slide number four is where we are in the presentation. Uh, data collect. So one before student density.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. I'll make sure to cue you guys moving forward. When we're taking a look at how the neighborhoods are divided up, we cut them up into study areas. Each one gets its own unique number so we can identify it in our system. But the idea is to follow major streets, natural boundaries that may occur, rail lines, waterways, places that we don't want students to necessarily cross that will make for efficient boundaries for us moving forward. The idea is to use these as building blocks for any attendance boundary scenario work that is done. And the unique part is that each one of these study areas is getting its own projection. So our projections are the sum of all the analysis that is being told in the one hundred and forty different study areas because there's going to be different trends occurring in different parts of your community. Some areas may be aging out, some areas may have a higher concentration of younger students versus older students that are graduating out of the system. And we're able to capture those changes by breaking it down into small study areas. And we have one hundred and forty of them. I'm going to move the slide forward again to the next one where we'll show you our student density. So this is the results of a rendering, if you will, of your student points based upon density. So we know where the most dense communities are moving forward in this process. So this gives us an understanding that spatial component, in reality, we have the actual dot points that represent each one of your students. But in the interest of privacy, we do not display that information so that we don't give up anyone's identity or any lookup points. But you can see here that obviously we're concentrated towards the Bay there and we began to become less populated as we move away. By advance the slide forward, we'll get into our forecast factors. We'll move it forward one more time to slide number seven. The first and probably the most important one in this analysis is going to be your kindergarten student population. So what we've done historically is we've looked at historic kindergarten classes, burst, the number of bursts that we've seen reported for the zip code that correlates to the Mill Valley district boundary. And what we study is the, the ratio, the increase or decrease. The idea traditionally is to take a look at your current kindergarten class, see what the bursts were five years prior and move that ratio forward to project your future incoming kindergarten students, right? So if we see an increase in the number of bursts in the, the next year, we would expect to see that result in more students in terms of kindergarten students moving forward five years later. However, in doing this analysis, we began to find some challenges there. Mill Valley is a sought-after community. There's a lot of people that are moving into it. And what we notice is that there are sometimes more kindergarteners showing up than what we are seeing in terms of births reported five years prior. So to account for that, rather than studying that ratio, we need to look at the capture rate. How many students do we typically see show up five years later in comparison to the births? Are we capturing more? Are we capturing less? And let's use that as a way to project our student population moving forward. And we find ourselves at an interesting time right now because if we look at the current data here in fall of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, we see that we had two hundred and forty-eight births. But we're comparing that to a resident student population of two hundred and sixty students that we expect to see show up later on for next year, for twenty-twenty-six. Comparing contrast that to where we were in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, we saw that ratio be a little bit of the opposite, right? But we're seeing that turn as, as we look back to the twenty-twenty-six birth year that represents the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty school year and that first set of bars there. And we see that we have about just over a hundred percent capture rate for the community. Of the two hundred and thirty-six, we had two hundred and thirty-six reported births. And we had a kindergarten class historically of two hundred and thirty-eight. So that's what that first gray bar is showing you. So we studied that ratio and we saw that decline going through twenty-eighteen. However, we see this trend begin to turn going into twenty-nineteen in terms of the number of births, which is our current year. Our current kindergarten class from the fall was, was born in twenty-nineteen approximately. And then we see that increase moving forward based on some data points that we were able to take a look at based upon current kindergarten enrollment registrations that we're looking at. So we're expecting you to capture more than what has actually been enrolled there. Now, when it comes to projecting that, this, it seems like we're on the beginning of a new trend. But it can have consequences if we overestimate that into your projections and, and continue to project that out. And this is why we always tell anyone that we work with, continue to update your numbers on a regular basis. Your group does that work and we'll continue to do that moving forward to capture those trends. Because if we see this continuing, that it could have consequences in terms of greater enrollment. Or was this an anomaly? Time will only tell. But we do know that the trend for the community here is increased birth. So in fact, if you look at the twenty-twenty-one year, so that is our second column away from our current year. If we take a look there, we saw three hundred and six reported births for the community. So with that and understanding capture rate, we're going to continue to expect to see the kindergarten student population grow a little bit throughout our projections. And that will spark and push forward some of the growth. And that's surprising for us in our experience in that many of the districts that we work with surrounding the Bay Area are seeing the opposite. They're seeing declining birth rates for their communities, which has had a negative impact on future growth. So there's a lot of people looking at declines. And that's a trend that we see across the state as well as nationally, with only a few pockets. And Mill Valley is one of those pockets where we see an actual reversal in that trend. Many communities have seen negative birth totals and just declining birth rates since the onset of the, the last recession that goes back, great recession that goes back to two thousand and eight. And so that was something that stood out to us and caused us to change our approach and tweak it to some of the things that we're seeing here in Mill Valley. If we move the slides forward one again, once again, so now we're on slide number eight. An important factor that we also take a look at is student mobility. So this is where we take a look at your current housing stock. And we say, all right, of the four years of student data, and we take a look at the grade groupings, how are students progressing from one grade to the next? So those of you that may be familiar with, that may be familiar with student core survival rates, that is a very similar approach. However, ours is based, especially where, where kids are at, it stands out a little bit more when there are existing attendance boundaries. But this is a unique situation, so it applies across the district as a whole. But what we look at is of the students that are in kindergarten, for example, or like we see here on the, the example, if we take a hundred students that are in third grade, we take a look at each of the last four years of student data representing three years of change, what has been the trend as third graders move into fourth grade? In this example, we're seeing a negative mobility because we lose about two percent of the student population as they move from third grade to fourth grade over the last four years, representing those three years of change. And if we have a hundred of those students and a mobility of point nine eight, that will allow us to project ninety-eight fourth grade students in the subsequent year of the projections. So this is what we're using to understand the ins and outs of the community, who's coming and who's leaving. And what we saw were a couple of things that stood out to us that were unique. First, these are healthy mobility numbers, with the exception of what's happening from fifth to sixth grade. If we take a look at kindergarten of first, we typically see in a lot of communities, that is a much higher mobility number. The reason that we typically see that is because not everyone is taking advantage of kindergarten in a community. But this shows that the kindergarten program is pretty popular and that you don't see a big jump from kindergarten to first grade because people are taking advantage of your kindergarten program and they're continuing through to first grade. So typically we see that up towards one point one zero, for example, as opposed to closer to one, like in, in your instance that we're seeing here. And you retain your students as they progress from first grade to second grade historically. And second grade to third grade is indicated by the one, the flat mobility factor. And just a slight drop-off, third to fourth grade, fourth to fifth grade. But we do see a much different trend taking place when it comes to fifth and sixth grade. And we're able to understand and capture the essence of your community through this because we know that there are middle school programs that people like to take advantage of as they try to prepare themselves to get into some of the private high school opportunities that are out there as well. And so some of them go through that process and we usually see a drop-off from fifth to sixth grade. But some of them return after sixth grade and we see that jump up just a little bit, three percent, as they progress through your grades and relatively flat, if you will, from seventh to eighth. So that's what we're seeing. And those are things that are unique to the community here. And we're going to take those numbers and project them out as students progress through the grades in that forecast. So I'm going to advance the slides once more to show you what our data model looks like. This is an infographic that kind of explains the methodology, if you will. We take a look at your historic birth date and that capture rate. We apply that against the current and historic student data to come up with your mobility factors. And then if in most, in other examples, in other cases where there's a significant amount of residential development, we will apply a student yield factor to new housing that's expected to take place in the community, come up with an overall projection. Not, that's not an applicable factor in this case, but this is the overall data model. Just because we don't see a significant amount of high-yielding student housing or housing that's going to generate enough students to cause us to incorporate that analysis into the projection. So birth rates, mobility come together to create our district-wide forecast. I'm going to advance the slide twice now to get you to slide eleven where we look at the district-wide forecast. And the first thing that really influences any student population projection is how your grades, how your students are arranged across the grades right now. We see that we've got some of your largest class sizes are here at seventh and eighth grade right now. And there's another little group there of fourth and fifth graders. And then we have smaller class sizes working their way through. Specifically, second and sixth grade are some of your, I'm sorry, first and sixth grade are some of your smaller class sizes. So you'll see some fluctuations in your projections in the middle school there, groups as they kind of progress through. And we'll show you that in a moment here. But we're seeing just a small tick down as we go into twenty-twenty-five, where we're expected to go from two thousand one hundred and fifty-three students to two thousand one hundred and forty. For those of you that are looking at the accounting, we look at this forecasted group here and the subtotals. We're talking about resident students. These are students that live within the district boundary and that we were actually able to match during our matching process. There were nine students that are left out based upon the student file that we received because we did not have appropriate address information. Sometimes that's kept private for privacy reasons and is not shared. And then we also have a few students that are coming from outside of the district boundary based upon the address that is in your student information system. We put those back into kind of our total numbers here. So we're just looking for a small decrease to take place of just twelve students in the first year. And then we see small little increases each of the next year moving forward in our projection moving through twenty-thirty-four. So this will be how it looks when we break it down by grade configuration. As I move to the next slide, we've broken it up into different grade groupings, K five, K eight and six eight to give you an understanding of what's happening there. Overall, we expect that small little decline and then steady increases as we move forward. And then we see at the K five level, we see that continuous growth. And then it starts to level off a little bit in the latter years of the projection where we see a dip at your middle school student population going through from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty. So we went from seven hundred and fifteen students down to a low of six hundred and twelve before climbing back up to seven hundred and thirty-five as we move forward. So that's an important understanding to have. This is important to, to take a look at and understand. I talked about those study areas when I advanced the slides here. You will see on the next slide, a, a map that shows you study areas and a resident student forecast for each one of those study areas, right? So there's areas where we see growth in red and orange and areas where we see declines in the green. And this shows why we break it down at the study area level to account for those changing trends, right? There's different things happening. Communities are aging out and turning over in some cases. Others are growing in terms of the resident student population for a number of factors. Whether that be the kindergarten students or people moving into your communities for a number of reasons burst upon that we're able to decipher from your mobility factors. So that will be an important piece as we move forward to help you with your facility planning purposes and, and the potential for attendance area redistricting to be done. That is the data piece that will be used and will support that to help you understand how those potential boundaries would hold up over time. So in summary, as I advance the slide two more times to get past the title slide here, we'll take you out to slide fifteen for where we are in terms of the, the forecast. In terms of grades K through five, you're currently sitting at a resident student population figure of one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine students. We expect that to increase through twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, so one thousand five hundred and eighty-three. And then tapering off a little bit when we get to the end of the ten-year projection window at one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven students. We're seeing a little, that dip that we talked about at six eight. And then overall, just steady but slow and managed. and then overall just steady but slow and manageable growth as we move forward. Uh, gaining our close to two hundred um uh about two hundred students as we move forward in your projections over the next ten years. So keep in mind that those numbers uh remove the nine students that we talked about that were unmatched or uh not enrolled in our not matching to an address within the district or were unmatched entirely. So uh those of you that are doing the accounting, that's where the reason you're seeing that discrepancy there from your official student file. So mobility is indicating that the students retain uh the district retains students very well all the way through fifth grade. Uh, before people start beginning to test into the private schools, we're able to identify that trend clearly by studying their mobility and that was a unique uh thing that we saw uh for Mill Valley. And the birth rates are trending upward, which is unique also uh leading to the introduction of larger kindergarten classes, which will offset some of the 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 uh smaller class sizes ahead of it that are expected to graduate out. Uh, and the student population is expected to grow over the next ten years, but in a manner of a way which averages about to be about three percent over the next uh uh five years and then eight percent over ten uh is what we're looking at. So this will help us uh to conduct future analysis uh for the district moving forward. And that's where we are in this process. Uh, I've been speaking for a while nonstop here and I want to just thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this information to you. Uh, I'm sorry, I I didn't advance this, I tell you to advance the slide there. Uh, but I'm here for questions, uh should there be any? And I'm looking forward to assisting you in the process uh moving forward here.
Thank you, Isaac. Um, open it to trustee questions.
Yes, um, oh, go ahead, uh trustee you.
So um, so it's interesting because um there has been more birth rates, but there's been also a lot of younger families who moved in when the interest rates were low and mortgage rates were low. Now the mortgage rates are really high, we might be facing stagflation for sure uh with all the tariff. Or some are predicting we may go into recession. How do you think that's going to impact birth rates?
Uh, that is, it's tough to say, it can be different and uh birth rates are the most difficult one to project. Um, so uh we're not in the business of projecting the actual birth rates or figuring out what decisions people are gonna make with their family planning. Uh, but we do take a look at what has actually occurred uh moving forward. Um, so it's it's hard to sell, there were people that thought that, hey, um, we expect births to decline and when it comes to uh COVID, for example, right? But there are other economic factors that were taking place at the same time. A lot of people were moving around based upon work from home, uh interest rates and being able to move to new communities. Uh, so we always encourage people to continue to look at those trends and that's why we adjusted our uh birth factors in in your projections. Uh, but did it in a conservative way moving forward to not over project uh what could occur because we do have some changing trends. A a lot of which you mentioned uh in terms of uh the potential for stagflation and um a lot of the economic uncertainty that we're seeing right now uh was not necessarily in the same place that it is today when we began the process. And that just serves as an example to continue to revisit your numbers uh moving forward to capture those trends as they change and that's part of the planning process and you've got some staff uh that's very capable of continuing to helping you with that uh moving forward.
And and I just wanna know what, how did, sorry, what did you assume for the um for the availability of housing and high mortgage rates? Are you, are you forecasting higher birth rates in our community, assuming that you will have same turnover of of elderly selling their homes to younger people? Or I I I I kind of think a lot of the inflow of younger families happened because of COVID and people working from home and lower interest rates, but that's not going on anymore. And there's really very little supply of new homes coming in. So what are you assuming going forward when you project increases in birth rates in our community?
That's based on the total number of reported births. Uh, so we do have a pipeline of uh children that have been born in the community and we take that data from the state, that is our source. Uh, they report it by zip code, uh so we're able to take a look at that and look at the total number of births that have occurred. And then we're able to compare and contrast of the students that were born, uh how many of them actually showed up five years later and that ratio is what we are projecting and averaging out for your community moving forward. Absolutely, it can change, uh but if we see a change in your birth rates in this year, um that's not going to impact the district for the next until another four to five years, depending on the TK situation in kindergarten uh makeup of the district moving forward. So there's time to react to that, which just reemphasizes the point. Uh, continue to look at those numbers, see if we see the a change in those trends. Uh, but we're assuming that we're going to capture what you have averaged uh moving forward and the difference between what has been born and what shows up five years later uh as a kindergarten student at Mill Valley.
I'm gonna ask a follow up question um because I have lived in this town for many years and um we also uh the family owns some real estate. There's a lot of folks here that are, as trustee you said, um older. And I'm wondering if you um, and when we were passing the bond uh before Dr. Kaufman's time, I, we had demographic data on what percentage of the Mill Valley population was over fifty five, which would mean not childbearing, right? Um, generally, so um uh my question is um twofold. When do you capture that data here specifically? Did you look at the current um demographics of the population and do some um uh postulating in terms of when that housing might turn over? And then did you uh, do you look at the trend lines in terms of housing turnover? And what kind of buyer we have? Because uh anecdotally, I can say unequivocally that the people that sell their homes um normally uh their 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 um estate is turned over to people who can't necessarily hold on to those homes given our uh Prop nineteen here in California, so they go up for sale and we generally see new families. So these children aren't being born here, but are bringing children who have been born in other zip codes. So I wonder how you capture or are you capturing that data to help us understand the growth potential of our student body?
Lots to unpack there and all valid points. Uh, I'll start with the 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 lattice, the last one there in terms of what are we capturing? You you mentioned something that was very relevant to why we adjusted our kindergarten approach. Uh, typically we look at um the number of students uh that were born. We look at uh the birth rates and how they change. We say, all right, if we see a decrease in the birth rate the following year and we compare our base year, uh, we expect the K student population to drop. Conversely, if we see our our base year and we look at twenty nineteen data and then uh take a look back uh at twenty twenty, if we see an increase uh in that, that would cause us to project an increase in your your student population for kindergarten in the next year of our projection. However, what we noticed is that exactly that and it was brought up by staff as well that was saying, hey, just exactly what you're saying, there are students that are showing up that aren't necessarily uh accounted for in the total number of births. And that's why we look at the capture rate and study that difference. How many are are showing up uh as and making it to kindergarten because people are being born after they move here uh, for example, right? And that's an important thing to understand. When it comes to the student uh turnover and how homes are turned over and what happens there, the factor that I presented that accounts for that is your mobility factor. So it's taking a look at the housing stock. It's not showing you how many homes are in each situation, but it does capture the net effect of those types of examples. Uh, so for if we're we're seeing, uh if we take a look at the study area, uh slide uh thirteen, that's why we break it down into smaller groups uh because there are different things occurring in different parts of your community. Where if we're seeing a community that's aging out, where uh they're older, they're not childbearing, their kids have already gone through the system and maybe that house has not turned over and it's just sitting there, you're probably going to see uh uh a flat uh or negative uh growth in that particular community because the students continue to go through and they're not being replaced. Conversely, uh you can see other communities where that that is happening, right? Where you will have those homes turning over and um people will be moving into those new homes because they're being sold and younger families are moving in. That's what mobility is capturing. Um, a lot of people want to be able to say how many are coming in because of uh uh the house was sold. Uh, how many are coming in because the the unit was rented to another family and the lease was up? It doesn't allow us to identify exactly how much of each thing is happening, but we have the net effect of all of those captured in our mobility. Uh, and the net effect is you re- retain your students uh and except for that dip that we see when we get to fifth uh to sixth grade. Uh, what we can take a look at uh to support that and our approach is to take a look at data that is specific to the district uh to help you uh plan for your facility planning purposes. There are third party data that we can bring in from the census and so on and so forth that can help supplement some of the things you're showing that kind of talk about the the age of the community and that can help us take a look at, you know, what the housing turnover uh can possibly be. Uh, and there's some other analysis that we typically reserve for faster growing districts that are a result of the potential for new housing. Uh, and we'll look at uh maturation study uh which is complete build out. Um, that's not an appropriate type of analysis for a a community like Mill Valley because most of it is uh built out at this point, uh unless there are significant zoning changes uh that would occur in the future. Uh, so I hope that that helps. Uh, I think there's some other data that we can provide in uh future meetings that I can sup- uh provide your staff with to help look into some of those age grouping things and some of the larger demographics that go beyond just your student population that gets into the actual makeup demographically of your community as well.
Yeah, I I do wanna say, I think that, you know, I'm, I can't really understand this colorful graph, but I think it's critical to understand this more fully. Uh, and maybe have more of an, you know, an awareness of where these pockets are. And again, uh can you just share, are you getting real estate? When when a, when a house turns over, how do you find out again if a family's moved in there or a single family has moved in? Do you have access to that kind of data?
No, we don't go into that level of granularity in that uh that's captured uh in our mobility study where we look at, all right, how many students have moved from third grade to fourth grade? Some of those students that don't show up, maybe they moved out because of that situation. Uh, if we have an increase from kindergarten to first grade, maybe that's people moving in uh with a first grader. Uh, maybe that is uh people that maybe were not necessarily registered in kindergarten that decided to show up for first grade. So we don't point to how much of each one of those factors is actually impacting uh your projections. But as a whole, it is captured as we look at that uh survival rate of students as they go from one grade to the next. That's how we're capturing that information. Uh, and then what we can do is as we start to group up your uh study areas, these small blocks that you're seeing uh that represent the the growth and declining communities uh uh by study area here based upon the colors that you're seeing. Uh, we can start to look at uh mobility studies based upon smaller groupings of those study areas, right? To see, hey, are we seeing a different trend in terms of mobility and uh one part of the community versus another? Um, but that's where we are right now with the district makeup being the district boundary.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, I wonder, you know, um, how how we're going to keep this information updated? Uh, maybe every year, every other year or something if we're gonna, because you know, there's a couple, well, there's one housing project in Mill Valley that's still in planning and maybe it'll be constructed in a few years and it could potentially bring in. I I don't know how many, I feel like it's fifty units, but I could be wrong. So that that could have a significant change, maybe, maybe not, I don't really know. And I'm just wondering how we're going to keep this information updated for our own use.
Uh, there's a number of ways that we can do that. We offer training for staff uh to use the same software to update this. Uh, we can also contract with you to do that. Uh, there are also other vendors that can provide this service to you as well. Uh, happy to support you uh with continuing to look at this, but it is always our recommendation that you do just that. There are different changing trends. Uh, we're in uncertain times right now and we're probably at the cusp of some changing trends uh that were mentioned at the beginning and some of the first questions. Uh, development that can change uh as well. Uh, in our experience and uh what we know, multi-family units don't generate a lot of students uh anymore. It's usually large developments, the single family homes that really drive your your projections. So we're gonna have to see a number of uh uh new projects, uh of more uh units uh to really drive growth when it comes to to new development. So a lot of that, you know, if you think about the the Bay Area, I did some work in Pleasanton and that was a big thing for a long time. I've been doing this for a while and they were building a lot of houses there in Dublin. Um, that's the kind of development that you need to see to really drive student population growth and and out of that respect. Uh, but the the end result is continue to update these on an annual basis, take a look at them to capture uh the trends and there's ways of of doing that.
All right, thank you.
All right, and that is uh just an information item, so we can move on to the next item, which is um Sandrine and
Thank you very much.
and Tracy who are here
Thank you.
this evening to speak to us about our facilities modernization work.
Good evening. Uh, Julio is uh taking care of a water emergency, so uh I'll do the introductions. Um, Tracy, I think you've met from uh Craig Communications. Um, she'll start the presentation and I'll I'll give an update at the end on the schedule. Essentially, we've uh, last time we saw you was in December, gave a brief uh update on the modernizations and the overall schedule. Today, we really wanna focus on the what we call the PEA and the EIR and uh the alphabet soup we're going through right now. But uh that's what we've been focusing on uh for the middle school over the last six months. Um, so we wanted to give you an update and what's coming up and Tracy is gonna go over that and I'll give an update on what the schedule looks like.
Okay, hi, good evening. It's sitting a long time this evening, right? I I guess you have softer chairs than what I was sitting on, but thank you for having me, Board of Trustees, Dr. Kaufman, Assistant Superintendent Rigney. I'm Tracy Craig, Craig Communications here to update you on the um two documents that are going out for public comment. I have some slides and I don't think I probably need this. I have some slides, they're very text dense.
You do for online.
Oh, you do, okay, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Okay, so I do have some slides, they're very text dense. The reason I did that is I want people that are not, that might look at this later and look at the slides to read them, but I'm just going to go impromptu, you don't have to read them. You have two documents associated with the middle school modernization project coming up for public comment. That would be an environmental impact report that's being prepared under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And you have what's called a preliminary endangerment assessment, a really, really bad title for what is basically um in an environmental site evaluation to look at environmental conditions at the middle school campus. I'm going to talk first about the EIR. The environmental impact report is a draft environmental impact report. You, the Board of Trustees, will be approving that document and what it does is it's a decision-making tool um to decide, to decide which is the best campus to cite the middle school on. Your preferred campus, as you know, is to, your preferred project, forgive me, is to cite the middle school here and also to cite the mobile units here as well. Um, but there were other people that wanted to see campuses other places. There's a lot of combinations, Edna McGuire was mentioned, some on and off-site properties were mentioned. And so the board in its wisdom decided to do a full EIR so that they can make a very informed decision. A very critical, and what an EIR does is it just evaluates environmental impacts on the the, on the project. So things like um traffic and circulation, air, air resources, potential um public health and safety, trying to think what else, aesthetics, noise, things like that. And it looks at that and it says, can we solve for these or are they going to be something that we're we're never gonna be able to change? Um, so you're, you have an EIR, it will be going out for public comment in July. I know that's not a great time, but we are going to make it available electronically. And we'll also have a public hearing in August, which is when people will mostly be coming back um where you will accept public comments. The EIR itself is right now getting prepared. I think you decided to do one last year, so we'd like to wrap up the EIR via the end of the year. So public comment in um the July timeframe. And public comment is extremely important. I can't, I cannot express how important this is for for parents to get involved. And the reason for that is you really want your parents to comment on what they want to see. So you have that information and can make a very informed decision for the constituency that you've been voted So you have that information and can make a very informed decision for the constituency that you've been voted in to serve. So I would like to make a pitch to all parents that are listening. Please look at that document when it's available. We'll be sending out an email, we'll have a link to it online. Once you get the public comments in, you'll review all of those and then you'll make a final decision on the environmental impact report. And that will tell you where you're going to cite your campus or if you're even going to do a project. There's all kinds of alternatives that will be in there and public comment will have a very, is a very important component in helping you to make a decision. I know Sandrine would like to get the EIR wrapped up by the end of the year so that you can actually break ground in June 2026. So important to realize, we are on a fast track schedule at this point and we do need to get through this to, to be able to break ground. But we also want to do it in a way that gives people plenty of time to review that. So public comment period again, July, 45 days, public hearing in August. And then you'll look at those and make a final decision by the end of the year. That's our current schedule. So questions on that? No, you've probably heard this three or four times. Because I've been to all the PTAs. Okay, the next thing that we're doing is called the preliminary endangerment assessment. And you can read this here, but really what that is, it just evaluates conditions at this campus for current and future users. It's required that you do it by the California Environmental, excuse me, no, it's actually the Code of Education. And the reason that you're doing it here is because the middle school was cited on an old landfill. It was a municipal dump, they burned waste and if they didn't burn it, they buried it and they spread it out over the entirety of the property. Your middle school is part of that old property. The community center is part of that old property. And the sewer ridge, sewer ridge agency is part of that old property too, that old landfill property too. And as you know, the community center was successfully built. So you are able to build on a property where a landfill was, but you want to make sure that you know exactly how far the waste goes, how deep the waste goes down and how you can safely build there. So when they closed the landfill, and I think it operated from the 1900s to the 1950s. What they did was put a cap of sandy clay and clay is good because it retards water from going down. That was about two to three feet is what the documents say. And they put that across the entirety of the property. And that has been serving to keep people from getting down into the waste. This environmental assessment will simply look at, you take samples of soil, groundwater, soil vapor, which is just vapor between grains of soil. And then you evaluate that data and you say, how far, how far is the contamination? How deep is the contamination? There's a risk assessment that looks at what is the current risk for people that are here, staff and students? And what would the future risk be for staff and students? That's all that does. And then from there, that will be, the agencies evaluate that and then they make a plan to do something to mitigate for any issues. So probably in this case, you're not going to be removing soil or old landfill waste. So they would say, you're going to probably thicken up the cap in some areas where it might have naturally thinned over time. And building some kind of engineered systems under the building to prevent vapors and old vapors coming up from the landfill from entering indoor air. That document is also available for public comment and we've decided to do the public comment at the same time that we're doing the EIR. So people can review two documents. We'll have a 45 day comment period on the preliminary endangerment assessment. And then we'll move into figuring out how, what we need to do in the response plan to make sure that the cap remains, the integrity remains. The one last thing I want to say about this, and this is great news for parents, is you have two agencies overseeing this. You have the Marin Environmental Health Department. And they actually inspect this property regularly to make sure that the cap is, is fine. And also check indoor air to make sure methane isn't coming up. And then you have the Department of Toxic Substances Control, which is a division of the California Environmental Protection Agency. And DTSC has a school evaluation branch. They're, they're the only agency in all of the United States that has that, is that's my understanding. And they are there especially to look at school properties, particularly ones that have contamination and how to use those successfully. So we are working with the best agents who we could possibly pick to do this. And they will be approving all the work, the documents for adequacy and completeness and any kind of cleanup or mitigation measures that we propose. So that document, again, so two documents, EIR, PEA, both available in June, in June, in July. Will be public comment period in August and then we'll move forward after that. And all of those documents will be available on the middle, on your website. Mill Valley School District website, I always wanted to say the middle school. So questions on that? No? Okay, it is nice to see you in person. I don't think, I've only met you electronically, how lovely to see you. Okay, the last slide actually has my number and I think you all do have my number. But I want to make sure that anybody, any parents that might have questions, you can see right there where my phone number is, that's my email. I do answer my cell phone. We'll be getting up information on the website by early next week. The last thing I do want to say is that a draft of the preliminary environmental assessment will be submitted to DTSC on.
Monday.
Monday, right. Monday, and we will also have a link on your website to that in case parents want to look at that. I do want to be very clear, that is the agency review document. It has not been reviewed by the agency. We expect to get comments from them. But we did want to, in a preponderance of transparency, make sure that we put that out there so people knew what the site conditions that we've found are.
So regarding that document then, we would advise community members to wait until the final document is done in July before they make public comment. Or try, really try to comment on it, right? If they, if they see the draft and they want to react, what, it's just for the agency to review. And then we're gonna take the agency's recommendations and edits or, you know, what it comments, what.
Have a second draft that will be available, yes.
We're gonna go through many iterations of it, so what if people react to that first one though? What are the steps for that?
Right, so I'm, I'm sure some parents will want to see it and they probably will have comments. And if they do, they can send them to the school district and we'll make sure that DTSC gets them. The formal public comment period will be in the, over the summertime. But if people want to comment on that, I mean, I, I would say don't because it's, it's a preliminary draft, right? And we really want the agency comments. And we have a sheet that will explain that to everybody, but you can't stop people from doing things. So if they do, if somebody feels very inclined, like they're very unhappy with it, I would say, call me and I will get them in touch with the agency and we'll submit those comments to the agency.
Okay.
But I would prefer, and I think everybody would prefer, if they waited till we have agency comments because we really do have the agency experts looking at it. We want to incorporate their input before we put that next, next version out for public comment.
Right.
Right. And I think you said we'll have multiple iterations. We, I don't think we actually will. The, the, the way it works is we'll have that preliminary one that goes into for agency comment. We'll get agency comments, we incorporate, we'll, we'll be reviewing those, incorporate them, and then we put that next draft out to the public.
And that's the final?
That would be, it's like a preliminary final.
Okay, okay.
We're calling it second draft final.
Second draft, okay.
No, second draft PEA.
Okay.
I know, it's a silly name, but we were trying to make it clear to people, so, so please comment on the second draft, PEA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
And I can explain a little bit more why we call that a second draft and it's not a final document. What is, what I'm showing today in the schedule, and it's really a snapshot just focusing on CEQA. So Tracy talked about the PEA and the EIR, line two and four. But we have other processes, right, other agencies we have to go through. And they're all tied, all those documents are tied together. So really the PEA, once the second draft is done, will trigger another step. So Tracy was talking about how that, that assessment is really looking at the conditions, right? The next step will be, what are the remediations and how do they look like? So that's what we call the raw or the rap or depending on what is next. But there are different steps. So we've been talking a lot about the PEA and EIR lately, but those are just the beginning phases of the process. What I wanted to show specifically tonight is the, so last time we met, we were anticipating the notice of determination for the EIR in August. This is showing now December. Two main reasons, as you know, we've been a little delayed in getting the sampling done over the, the winter. And the other reason is we're trying to really streamline the process because there are a lot of public review periods required. And as Tracy was mentioning, we're essentially trying to align the EIR and PEA review periods at the same time. So people are not confused with what is what document and those two are tied. The EIR actually incorporates the PEA. So you're gonna see the PEA in two places, really. So that's what pushed a little bit everything. And right now we're showing the EIR notice of determination, which is when the, the board will approve that document. We're showing it right now at the end of December. And you're gonna ask me, when can we break ground? Well, after, while we're doing all this, there are other reports and documents we need to do with the county, which is called the PCLU. Which is tied essentially, it's a matter, is the post closure land use plan. And essentially it's a document we have to do, we're required to do to monitor the, the site because it was a burn dump. So essentially it's regardless of what you do with the property, it's just a maintenance plan for the property. So that needs to happen and it's tied to everything else and it's gonna be beyond December to get that completed. And that's gonna also inform how we're gonna build and mitigate what the PEA findings are. Right, so again, a lot of different processes, a lot of different agencies we have to, to coordinate with. And the timing makes it that we have to wait for, for one or the other to move on to the next one. So right now, this is a very aggressive schedule. We've, we are hoping we'll stick to it. But right now we're looking at probably completion of all the reports, all the agency approvals by Q1 of 2026. At which point we will be able to start planning for the construction, whatever the project is. This is not much time and it keeps pushing a little bit, but this is what it looks like right now.
The PCLU, does that say pure, is it plan review, the big chunks of blue, plan review?
Correct, that's a, the blue is essentially when the documents are with the agencies for review.
Okay, so it's not contingent on the site?
So the PCLU, we had to do, the, the most critical piece here was the PEA. Like doing the site assessment informed, you know, what the site conditions were. And that's information we need for the environmental impact report. But in order to come up with a PCLU, essentially a post closure land use plan, we need to understand the existing condition, therefore the PEA was critical before we could start the PCLU.
Right.
So they, they each, really the PEA was the.
So the second draft public review is when you can start the plan review for the PCLU. Alright.
So essentially right now, we have the PEA, it will be again published on Monday.
There's two, there's two public comment periods on the PEA. There's one when we do the site assessment, so the site evaluation that evaluates environmental conditions. And there's a second public comment period on the cleanup plan. I'm a little, I'm a little reticent to use the word cleanup because it will be more mitigation measures. So things that you do when the waste is in place to make sure that you can operate and populate the campus safely. And that is also subject to a public comment period. That's a little more streamlined and that's also the agency is running that and that will be 30 days.
Is that what the removal action work plan is then?
It's called, it's called, it's actually called the response plan.
Okay.
For this, but, but same difference, yes, that's what that is.
But that's moving because it's.
Right, so, so you're looking there, if you see first and it's, the first draft review is.
Now.
The one, right, the one that, no, the one that will be, the one that we'll be sharing over the summer. And then the second one, is it the, is that right?
No, that's.
No, no.
First draft is Monday.
Sorry, first draft review is right now that will be given to the agencies, that's agency review. And, and we should change that so people know. So the first draft review is by the agencies, second, second draft public review is in the summer on the PEA.
And then there's approval, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand how, like which agents, you know.
Here you go. So first draft, first draft is now, second draft is the summer and then there's approval of the PEA. So the site assessment is approved. Then you move down to the next one, which is a removal action work plan, but this is called a response plan. And you'll see that there'll be a public review, there'll be a review time, not in yellow, but review, that's the agency. And then the next one, public review in January is when it's out for public review for 30 days. And then the agencies should approve it. I, I mean, I never want to assume an approval when you go out to public review, right? But I, I would assume that, that they might approve it with some changes or conditions.
Yeah, that would be good to just add a few words for people like us that have no, you know, just.
And it's complicated, you've got all kinds of moving pieces here with different agencies and different reviews, yeah.
So I think one thing that would help, I think, the board is to note on here. Because, you know, we've got PEA approval, we've got EIR approval, that's us, right? When it's done, but the, the removal action work plan approval is a different agency. It's not us, is it?
It will be DTSC.
Regulatory agency, yes.
So I just like, you know, in terms of like key board moments, it's like, oh yeah, we, you know, we're looking at the EIR to get all the data about, we have our preferred site, but we're looking at all of our sites and then to make that final determination, it's going to be a board decision or it's gonna, a recommendation's gonna come to the board.
Correct.
Right, so differentiating that from like DTSC approval on charts like these, I think might be helpful, you know. So we, we understand, oh, that agency's doing that, that agency's doing that.
Or maybe even just making the boxes around it different colors, like you're green and they're yellow, right?
Yeah, some, whatever, to just, and then, you know, ultimately you'd be like, no, this is gonna be a recommendation, recommendation to the board for XYZ, so.
We can do that.
And maybe an overlay of just decision points, right? I mean, because I think kind of to, to Michelle's point about a flow chart, like, you know, maybe there was a call out where, because you try to see the alignment, but I still can't quite exactly see what meeting they're gonna make a decision whether or not they're doing a project and where that project goes. And I still, still can't see if and when they do that, when will we be breaking ground? And I know it's there.
We can absolutely make those, we can work on those changes and make them, that shouldn't be hard at all and we can reissue it.
As the person that didn't create it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions now?
We have your number.
Thank you for, thank you for helping us.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, and the next one is a board resolution, which I will read.
There it's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I have it somewhere, okay. So we have a resolution 15 dash 24 slash 25 about day of the MVSC employee, May 20th, 2025. But I'm gonna say one thing real quick, and I wrote this down again, mostly because my voice will tremble because it's. But I'm going to say one thing real quick, and I wrote this down again, mostly because my voice will tremble because it's so emotional for me. I want to take this opportunity, and I hope, I know the meeting around late, most of our teachers have gone, thank you Juliette for staying. But I hope that you can take this back to the teachers and all staff, this is everybody. But I want to take this opportunity to thank our teachers and all staff. I'm sure you've heard me talk about the fact that my oldest daughter is part of the bubble class that started kindergarten in twenty twelve. They're now about to graduate. All of these former students of yours will be taking different paths, whether it's a gap year, working, community college, or university. And I'm really excited to see where they're ending up. I know that the foundations of learning, and especially writing, taught at the elementary levels, and then reinforced at the middle school helps set these kids up for success. And I know when a student leaves your class to go on to the next grade or school, you don't necessarily know what happens. Or what happens later to the, the student. But I'm here to share that they have great options, and to thank everyone for remaining flexible with the ever-present ebb and flow of this class as it moved through our system. So thank you, and with that, I'm going to read the resolution and then ask for approval. Whereas the contributions of our dedicated teachers and support staff are essential to the development of our youth. Whereas these staff members work tirelessly to inspire, challenge, and support their students daily, fostering the growth of well-rounded individuals. Whereas classified school staff play a crucial role in the educational system, and their efforts are vital to the success of our children. Whereas teachers and classified staff work hand in hand to create the exceptional school district we proudly have today. Be it resolved that the Mill Valley School District Board of Trustees hereby proclaims May twentieth, twenty twenty-five as the day of the MVSD employee. Be it further resolved that the Mill Valley School District Board of Trustees strongly encourages all members of our community to personally express their appreciation to our teachers and classified staff. Thank you. With that, this is a roll call vote, so could I get a motion to approve? Second, thank you, and you have to, as clerk.
All right, President Nakatani.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I am trustee Srinath Chaj, and I'm an aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, teachers, all staff, everyone, admin, everybody in Mill Valley School District. With that, we now have future board items, does?
Yes, and you know, I, maybe the next board meeting, we can also remind folks that we have, you know, policies and processes that guide our board meetings. And it's found in a handbook that's on our website. But one of the things that we can do is, once we hear comments, we can wait till the very end to, you know, have conversation about possible board items. And one of the things I wanted to, and there's a process for that. So I can, I can offer up a board item suggestion, and then this board has to by a majority vote, agree to put it on the agenda. And if it doesn't pass, then I can come back the next month if I so choose. But, you know, I heard a lot, we, we've had a lot of conversation about transitional kindergarten. And we have gotten more and more educated to not only the heart of the matter, but the legality of the matter, and the political landscape, and then the financial piece. And we're evolving and understanding all those elements and how to plan as a board to look at our mission and vision and address this one year only that we have approved. So I would like a future board agenda item to encompass, you know, all of the public comment we've had so far, the decisions we've made, and to look ahead, you know, now. Because it's so easy to get sidetracked to say, we've, we, we made a decision, we're good to go. And then six months shows up and we're, we're, you know, that's just how life is. And I believe it was Anita Sparks who, who brought, I think it was, yeah, that, you know, with our deficit, how are we going to get to our state representatives? And, and ideally explore that basic aid districts should be funded per pupil. And, and to understand what roadblocks there might be in this political or economic landscape to that possibility. So I'm wondering when, first of all, does, is the board interested besides me in agendizing this? And if so, then could we look at the calendar now? And, and that would be, I would defer to the direction of Superintendent Kaufman with our meaty agendas.
Can you clarify exactly what your agenda item is?
I'd like to agendize components of continuing a full-day transitional kindergarten. What are the elements for the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year that, and, and just have a presentation of all these various elements? And do it so that we can spend time to hear it, the public can hear it, and we can, we can move through this. Because we'll have to make a decision in, in, probably by January, February of next year.
Well, I actually think we have to make a decision earlier, but I also don't think it's right to make that decision right now without Natalie or Ellie present.
I would concur with that.
So you mean in terms of putting it on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd just like to have it in the record that I've brought it up. And that I would like it to be brought back as a board agenda item next month, and that we can discuss it. Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and of course, I do want Superintendent Kaufman's feedback on timing on that, because she knows all elements.
I, I just, I just want to clarify, what am I missing? I thought we were going to offer transitional kindergarten for one year. We haven't yet made a decision to continue to offer it. We're still waiting on a lot of clarification and information, so I don't know what we will discuss.
Yeah.
It, it, so I'm wanting it to be an information-only piece, that once with this board is, is, once we have some information, that we have a, maybe a look-see in terms of when we might forecast that we have that ability to have a conversation and informational, you know, question and answer for the board on information.
I think we're going to have that anyway, once we have all the information.
Yes, please.
Okay. So we, I think the board has made a decision to eliminate transitional kindergarten. Or, you know, we were offering as an extension this year. I think in terms of order of operations, we need to understand what the legislative mandate is. And so I think our best approach will be to wait until the test claim. We already have a legal analysis from this actual legal counsel of the legislature, which has not been, it, it's not been implemented at our county level. I'm not quite sure what, what those next steps will be. But I think it's important for us to have an update legally on the various perspectives. And the, the potential for either a state mandate that overrides the legislative council's analysis, or a state bill that says that in fact transitional kindergarten will be funded. So I think we need to wait for the test claim and potentially some other information. Because we won't understand the landscape until we understand what the requirements are. So my recommendation is, once that comes through, which is anticipated in the end of May. I don't know that we'll have guidance in time for the first June meeting. But I do believe that, you know, we need, we need to bring that legal information forward first, and as soon as we have it. And then I think, again, part of the reasons why we're having these community conversations is to understand what our community's priorities are collectively. Because we do, you know, absent state funding for a program for a grade level, we'll need to make some decisions. And we'll need to revisit that in a big picture. So I think it's kind of twofold. First is, let's find out what the law requires us to do pursuant to the latest information. It is not a requirement. It was also shared as it was not a requirement according to the very council for the legislature. So I think there's ongoing conversations about that. And I, I would prefer that our attorney is here to share the analysis, pros and cons of each interpretation. I do know that we're in dialogue with counsel at MCOE. And, you know, we continue to collaborate in trying to develop a shared understanding of requirements for all districts across the state.
And the reason why I bring it up also is that our MBTA also acknowledged in AB thirteen ninety-one. So there's a lot of moving parts, and I feel that I myself, as an individual board member, having a hard time holding all this information. So I feel that, and I'll repeat this again next month, but I feel that this board, I'd like us to entertain providing this information in real time to our public, and inviting them to come to these meetings so that we are all informed of the same information along the way. So that, that there's just, you know, we, we share the story and we bring everybody along.
It's changing in real time, though, which is why I'm hesitant right now, and I think I agree that. Yeah, that's.
Exactly.
You said, we need all five of us, so, but, but yeah, we can talk again about it. Trustee you, any future board items? I have one that I discussed with Dr. Kaufman, is that I wanted to invite the city of Mill Valley to do a small presentation at one of our June board meetings on their e-bike. I don't know if I should call it a law or not.
Ordinance.
I think it's an ordinance, developing ordinance.
I don't see any difference in kids' behavior on e-bikes.
Well, so, which is why I think it's important for our city partners, and maybe, you know, I'll ask if they want to bring Chief Navarro with them or anything to do updates to the school board and to parents about what's going on with the adoption of the test pilot assembly bill that Assemblymember Connelly put forward. Okay, thank you. Let's see, board reports. Any board reports?
I've been remiss dealing with my personal situation, sorry.
No, that's fine. I don't know if you have anything.
Well, I think that you and I had a, a good conversation with our city, you know, city partners. And we discussed the e-bikes and just, you know, sitting down in a very casual conversation over coffee about ways that we can partner. And I know that we are going to continue that, and looking forward to more of those. And, you know, being able to report out perhaps more specifically, you know, in next month. There's some, we'll hopefully have the whole crew here, and just report out, you know, what we're learning. And at that point, at this point, that's where we're at, is just getting to know each other and what our common interests might be.
Thank you. Well, along with Superintendent Kaufman and trustee Abdali, we went to the Kiddo Gala. I did do that. I haven't been to it. I think this is my fourth gala. I know, the previous three were pre-COVID, so this is my first post-COVID Kiddo Gala. It's very fun. And they raised a lot of money. It's all, you know, all for kids. It's wonderful. It was very crowded, it was very noisy. Couldn't really move around. Really packed that place. All good, raised a lot of money. And my other thing is, is kind of related to school board, but it's very related to parents and adolescents. Everyone should watch Adolescents.
I don't know, I, it seems so down.
You should watch, especially if you have a fifth grader who's coming up in that. Really important, I think it's, yeah, it's a heavy watch, so.
Get it, where do you find it?
Netflix.
Okay, that's something my husband can help me with.
Anyway, sort of, it's just a shout out for.
I, 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 I.
It's the British one, yeah.
It is heavy.
It's heavy, yeah.
I couldn't.
Yeah.
I can't.
But with that, I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting. So what time I got to put my glasses on?
Thank you for holding it under.
Thirty-seven, thank you everyone for, well, thank you everyone for sticking around. Thank you, eight thirty-seven, adjournment, thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Okay, thank.